All right, welcome, everyone. We will call to order our committee of the whole meeting and first start by acknowledging and recognizing that we work, live, and play in the city of Port Alberni, which is situated on the unceded traditional territories of the Sashat and Hoopacassit First Nations. We do have an agenda in front of us. Are there any late items to add by committee members? Seeing none, any late items from our corporate officer?
No late items, Madam Chair.
Okay, hearing no late items, would somebody like to move approval of our agenda? Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Dame. Seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? Carried, none opposed. And we have minutes from the special, or sorry, from the meeting held at 6:00 PM on November 18th, 2024, as presented. Moved to adopt by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Dame. Any comments on the minutes? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And this is an opportunity for public input period next. Public input period is an opportunity for the public to address the committee. Up to six speakers for up to five minutes each can be accommodated. And for anyone participating electronically, please use the raise your hand feature and we will call on you in the order in which it appears. Would anyone like to share public input today? Chris, come on forward.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Chris Alamany, 3854 Sixth Avenue. This is Mike Yudes. I'm the former and outgoing president of Alberni Valley Transition Town Society. Mike is taking my place, so we thank him for that. And we actually have a whole new board as well, so lots of change happening there. But today, what I'd like to bring forward is something that has come out of a recent event we had around Dry Creek Restoration in the Somas Lands. And what we'd like to present to the city are a fair number, 24, questions that came out of a process that we had one night, a few months ago. And I think the corporate officer has our questions there and perhaps she could pass them around. But our intention is for these to be out there, both for you to hopefully be able to respond to us, and I have a statement here that I'll read along with the questions to do that. So Free Awatchit was the name of our event. Awatchit is the original name of Dry Creek, what we now know as Dry Creek. So we're a group of concerned citizens and neighbors working together to mitigate and prepare for climate change and to help transition our community to a low-carbon and resilient future. That's Alberni Valley Transition Towns. On September 18th, members of AVTT, Dry Creek Restoration Group, and the community at large came together to discuss the possibilities, challenges, and opportunities to free Awatchit. This would entail a full restoration of the Dry Creek estuary, returning the shoreline to its original location within the bounds of Catalyst Paper Mill, Third Avenue, and Dunbar, and realigning Dry Creek or Awatchit, the channel, along its natural course. The general consensus from the group was that while this would be a large, multi-year, multifaceted project, it was still achievable even with the key-to-key pathway in place, consistent with the practice of other Vancouver Island municipalities, and could provide substantial benefit to Port Alberni. Free Awatchit, or the Dry Creek Restoration Group, feels the best way to redevelop the Somas Third Avenue areas for the benefit of the entire city, including citizens, wildlife, and the watershed ecosystem as a whole, is to, one, restore the shoreline and waterway to as close to its original state as possible; two, restore the course of Dry Creek or Awatchit to its estuary form; three, restore the entirety of the shoreline and estuary and create a new public place and waterfront park bounded by Dunbar, Third Avenue, and Catalyst; and four, concentrate redevelopment. And this is relevant to today's other main topic, new housing and commercial opportunities on Third Avenue, Fourth Avenue, Dunbar, Kingsway, Lower Redford, and Harbour Road areas, including ensuring there is a mix of low-barrier social housing, affordable housing, market housing, tourist accommodation, commercial, and light industrial spaces. So the group has the following questions for the city and requests answers to these in writing in a public meeting before February 1st, 2025. So we have three general categories. The general questions, number one, has the city considered realigning Dry Creek? Number two, will details of the letter of intent signed with Matthews West to develop the Somas Lands be made available to the public? When can we expect an update from the city and Matthews West? Number three, when will the public's vision for these lands be considered? Number four, according to the current City Council's vision, who is expected to own the Somas Lands in 2050, which is 25 years, either generally, public or private, or specifically? If there is a lease or other type of arrangement, could you please specify that? Number five, what is the involvement of First Nations? Have they been consulted throughout the process? And please provide the most recent date if you can. Number six, what is the city's insurance liability? Exposure of the Somas Lands due to flood risk and tsunami danger? Would residential properties on the Somas Lands be insurable? Number seven, what is the state of planning for other city-owned lands in the estuary, the railway, other lands originally purchased from Catalyst? Eight, does the city plan to purchase any other properties in the area? Nine, has the city considered how the Matthews West redevelopment could lead to redevelopment of Third and Fourth Avenue? Ten, how can redevelopment of this land address homelessness, particularly in the Third and Fourth Avenue areas and in the city as a whole? Number 11, is social housing a part of any redevelopment plan for this project? Number 12, how will the Somas Lands and other city-owned lands in the area be addressed in the official community plan? Those are the general questions. These are specific for infrastructure. Number 13, what is the city's plan for addressing flooding on the Somas Lands and Third and Fourth Avenue corridor? How will the city mitigate the tsunami risk for new or redeveloped areas? Number 15, will this area be part of the floodplain bylaw? Number 16, Dry Creek or Awatchit was not included in the Somas Watershed Flood Management Plan. Will the city, with the regional districts, who is a regional district plan, will the city amend the plan to include impacts of flooding from the Dry Creek watershed? Number 17, will Matthews West be required to fund an environmental impact assessment for any proposed development on the Somas Lands? Number 18, what is the current state of site contamination? Does the certificate of compliance require that the land remain undisturbed? What bioremediation would be required for soil removed from the site? 19, what is the plan of the Enex Cardlock fueling facility on Dunbar? Other flood tsunami-exposed fuel facilities like Chevron and the Co-op location on Beaver Creek have been removed or relocated? 20, is there an opportunity to realign the existing railway, the road rights of way during redevelopment for improved accessibility, connection, and circulation? 21, is the key-to-key pathway now in its permanent alignment, or is it intended to be flexible for future development? And then finally, a few environmental questions. 22, what would be done to protect Dry Creek or Awatchit, considering its status as a Coho salmon habitat and possibly other salmonid species? 23, has the city been in contact with the Department of Fisheries and Oceans on the state of Dry Creek watershed and plans for redevelopment of the Somas Lands? And if so, please provide details. And finally, does the city test water quality in major city watercourses, Katsukis, Roger, Dry Creek, Ship Creek? If so, could they be tested? And if not, why not? That's a big list.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chris, for bringing it in writing and reading it out as well. And my apologies to counsel, I did notice him going over, but we don't have a long list of speakers, so I made the call to let him continue. So I hope everyone is okay with that. Firstly, I just, and I know this is just public input period, so typically, obviously, we wouldn't have a back and forth, but appreciate that you've brought it in an organized way. Firstly, just wanted to say thank you for your work as the president or the chair of Alberni Valley Transition Town. I know you've been in that role for a long time, and you've done a lot of really good work in that position and really advanced some meaningful conversation in our community. So appreciate your effort there as the outgoing person in that role. I think that if counsel, councils can decide how they want to handle this letter, if counsel would like to provide a written response, there are some things that I know we can easily answer, and there's going to be some things in here that we are not able to answer yet. Counsel could provide direction. Obviously, it would be a recommendation to counsel, but provide direction to answer what we're currently able to if they'd like. Counselor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd make that motion that we recommend to counsel to come back with answers that we can't answer this time.
Thank you, and seconded by Counselor Dame. Any comments on that? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Carried, sorry, any opposed? Carried. And yeah, I just, I guess just for myself, kind of prefacing that by saying that some of these questions will be answered in time but are not able to be answered yet. So we can work on getting a response to you in writing that we would just include in a council agenda for what we are able to provide information back for at this time. Did anyone else on council want to provide any comments since I've just started that today? Counselor Solder?
Well, I just want to say the questions you asked are valid and totally, many of the public have asked those kind of questions, so I look forward to seeing the response and your takeaway at the end. Thank you.
And just to be clear, these are questions that came from our meeting and included many people that weren't necessarily part of Transition Towns as well, so.
Great, okay. Thanks so much for coming and speaking. And you know, as you can see, we don't have a big crowd at our committee for the whole today, so do appreciate you being here. And again, just the work that your group has done on this topic, I know there's lots of different perspectives on it in the community, and it's been valuable to hear from, I don't want to say a specific segment, but hear conversations structured in a specific way.
Awesome.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone want to?
I think we've all got copies. Thank you. Counselor Petola?
I was consulting too much on 24 questions to have a quick response, but just kind of a side issue that was interesting me is with regards to restoring the Dry Creek Habitat. I'm wondering what the position of the Transition Town group, for lack of a better term, is in their commitment towards creating that objective, bringing that objective to fruition, or what type of experience or expertise they bring rather, in addition to the insightful questions they ask, do they also bring insightful answers?
That's a great question. Completely honestly, we are just a group of citizens. We don't necessarily have any specific experience doing that kind of thing. There are certainly many connections that we have through our group to other places on the island and other people on the island that have done this kind of work in Courtney and Englishman River. So there are many, many places where we can look for that experience and bring that experience to the city if need be. But we really need, we need that as the landowners, we need that support to be able to do that.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other members of the public who would like to provide public input today? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. We have no delegations and just one item on our agenda, and that is the interim housing needs report. And I will pass it over to our manager of planning.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so for discussion tonight, we have the interim housing needs report for 2024 from the Development Services Department. And so I have prepared a presentation to go into a bit more detail on the report, following on the committee of the whole meeting from the end of October. I have about 20 slides with a whole bunch of figures and facts and tables, but I do recognize this is counsel's time to discuss the report, so please interrupt me whenever you feel like asking a question and we can discuss. I'm happy to. Okay, so a little bit of background on the interim housing needs report. Staff worked with a consultant, City Spaces, to prepare the interim housing needs report over this last spring and summer. And the goal of the housing needs report is to estimate the city's current and future housing demand, the number of dwelling units that are required. And we did so according to a new provincial methodology. So every city in the province is also doing a housing needs assessment, and it's all calculated the same way. And this is part of the provincial government's housing supply program, where they're trying to, actually, they're compelling cities to start addressing the housing crisis in their communities, and the first step is quantifying that housing need so that cities can then work towards adjusting all their plans and bylaws to getting those housing units in the future. So staff compiled this report with the consultant City Spaces to comply with changes to the Local Government Act, and this data also supports work on the new 2042 official community plan, including the land use and housing policy sections. And this report allows the city to better understand and respond to housing needs in the community. And as part of the new legislative changes, a new housing needs report will need to be done by the city every five years. So this will be rolling with new updates every five years, and it'll be changing every five years, and we can measure the progress that we're making towards this housing goal. Slide, please. Slide, please. Thank you. So in this next section, we'll just go through some rent and sales price trends to give you a sense of the current status of the housing market in Port Alberni. So the chart you see right here is included in the housing needs report, and it shows the median rent in Port Alberni from 1990 through to 2023. And what's most notable is after 2015, rents started accelerating and getting higher due to a lack of supply in the market, and then they spiked in the early stages of the COVID-19 pandemic. And they adjusted slightly after the initial pandemic, but then continued to rise. And a lot of this data only goes until January 1st, 2024. You can see the three-bedroom apartments came down a little bit after the pandemic, but essentially, the trend is that prices have been accelerating since 2015. In the past five years, rent for a one-bedroom apartment has increased by 31%. Two-bedroom apartments have gone up by 39%, and three-bed apartments have gone up 48%. Overall, rents have increased since 2006 33% more than renter household incomes. So rent increases are outpacing people's ability to afford them. Slide, please. And this results from a lack of supply in the market. From 2006 to 2021, Port Alberni gained an additional 520 renter households, but the city only gained 62 net new purpose-built rentals. And when we say net new purpose-built rentals, that's how many the city has gained over time when you subtract all the ones that have been demolished or destroyed in a fire or no longer being rented out because of those reasons. And then only 20% of the city's purpose-built rentals have been built since the year 2000, which means that over the previous decades, not much housing has been built, contributing to that lack of supply. Since 2020, 188 rentals have been built. So even in the last 20 years, most of the housing, 80% of it, has been built since 2020, which shows you just how little has been constructed recently. I'm going to keep trying this until it works, but thank you, Sarah. This chart shows how purchase prices have gone up, and again, similar to rental prices, you see the price accelerating after 2015 due to lack of supply in the market. Sorry, slide, please. In the past five years, the sales price of a house has gone up by 52%, and the sale of a condo has gone up by 117%. So within the interim housing needs report, we have tables that show the demand for the next five, 10, and 20 years. In total, in the next five years, Port Alberni's estimated housing need is 1,220 units. This is both the current need right now and the need that will need, sorry, and the need that will grow in the next five years. So this also represents, there is not enough housing now that's counted in this number, and then what we'll need in the next five years as well. So 110 units or 111 for households that are in extreme core housing need, which means their house is taking up more than 30, or home is taking up more than 30% of their gross income if their house is too small for the size and composition of their household or if their house needs repairs. We also need another 100 units for people who are experiencing homelessness, 49 units for suppressed household formation, so that's an additional 49 units that will allow people to move out of their current residence and form a household of their own. Another 827 units. out of their current residence and form a household of their own. Another 827 units in the next five years, just for the anticipated household growth in five years. And then 13 units for the rental vacancy rate adjustment. So this number, Port Alberni needs to have another 13 housing units on the market at any time to make sure that we can get to that 3% vacancy rate and maintain it over time. And then an additional 120 units for Demand Factor, which is essentially a buffer of housing units that Port Alberni should have in its supply to maintain an adequate demand-supply balance in the market to prevent excessive rent and price growth. Slide, please. But the housing needs report also breaks down this housing demand into the type and tenure of housing. So over the next five years, that's 168 market rentals, 206 non-market rentals, 106 deep subsidy and supportive rentals, and 670 ownership housing. And it's worth noting that over half of the supply in the both five-year and 10-year demand is homes for people to buy and for people to buy at the income level that lets them purchase a home, which is an important part of the supply. It's not just all subsidized housing or affordable housing. Undermarket rental, that represents 168 units for households who could spend between 1,250 and 2,500 per month. Under non-market rental, that would be rental for households who could spend between 500 and 1,250 on a rental. The deep subsidy and supportive rental, those are the BC Housing Projects, the nonprofit Housing Society projects. Those would be units for people who could spend more than 500 per month. So we're talking a fairly deep subsidy. And then under the ownership category, that represents people that are currently renting but have an above-average income and could afford to spend about 250 per month. Sorry, 2,500 a month. Slide, please. So core housing need is a standard metric used by Statistics Canada to assess housing status of households, and it's an important part of the housing needs report. A household is determined to be in core need if one of the followings is met, either their housing requires repairs, their housing costs at least 30% of their gross income, and their housing doesn't have enough bedrooms for the household size and composition. An extreme core housing need, as I mentioned before, is when all three of these are met. Slide, please. And in Port Alberni, that was 111 units in the next five years that were needed under extreme core housing need. So who experiences the most extreme core housing need in Port Alberni? Well, it's renting households between the ages of 35 and 54, seniors across the board, low-income households, and one-person households. And of the renter households in Port Alberni, they are five times more likely to be in core housing need than homeowners. And 75% of the core housing need in Port Alberni is low-income households, and 67% of the core housing need is one-person households. So really, the need is really concentrated in the low-income, one- and two-person households in Port Alberni, the core housing need. Slide, please. Of the seniors, a little bit of information on that category. Seniors have it difficult in the community in terms of housing. Up to 50% of senior households are in core housing need, and half of renting households that are in core need, or sorry, half of renting households are in core need where the primary maintainer is a person over the age of 75. So if the person over 75 is responsible for the rent or the mortgage, half of those households are in core housing need. One-person seniors households have really high rates of core housing need regardless of whether they're owners or renters. And I'll go a little bit further into some affordability stats for rental and ownership. For rental housing, only 41% of renter households can afford a purpose-built rental at the median price. So of course, that's the median and not the average. So it's not the lowest, it's not the highest, but it's right in the middle of what rents cost in Port Alberni. Moderate-income households, so they make, say, 50,000, up to 50,000 a year, might be able to afford a one-bedroom rental. And I say might because it depends on the rental price. And low-income households under 30,000 a year are extremely challenged to access housing unless they're already renting at a lower rate. So maybe they've been in their place for a while, their rent is protected by provincial rental increase legislation, but if they had to move for whatever reason or form their own household, they would be completely priced out. The benchmark purchase prices in January 2024 are listed there for single-detached homes, townhouses, and apartments. These have possibly come down a bit since January 2024, but these still marks a significant increase since the 2015. To purchase a dwelling of any kind in Port Alberni requires a household income of 107,000 per year with a 20% down payment of 85K. But only 25% of households in Port Alberni earn more than 100,000, which means there's a very small slice of people who could afford to purchase any dwelling in Port Alberni. Their ability to purchase depends on having a very large down payment. So their capacity for that down payment, existing family wealth, et cetera. And I think to add on to that, an additional stat that came out of the report that was really telling about the situation in Port Alberni is that the area median income, so median incomes in Port Alberni, are 27% lower than the median income of British Columbia. In terms of ownership affordability, renting households have lower income and they lack the equity to purchase a home. Only 10% of renters have the minimum income over 100K to afford a townhome with a 20% down payment. So it's another 90% of renters who have no ability to get into the market. Some households with above-average income, so starting at 75K, cannot afford to purchase any type of dwelling, and they still need to have a down payment larger than 20%. Now, some general findings from the report. This is where it gets a little bit interesting for Port Alberni. When we look at housing need and why is there so much housing need? Why are there these hundreds of households that need new dwellings to meet their needs, both in terms of their household composition or their income? Housing needs in Port Alberni may be due to an increasing mismatch between the existing housing stock and their household needs rather than pressure from rapid growth. So when we see the housing need numbers go up, the number of dwellings required go up, it's not just because the population is growing. That's been really steady since 2006. It's often a mismatch between the number of bedrooms in the home and people's income in order to afford it. So they may need a four-bedroom home, but in order to purchase a four-bedroom home, they would need double the income, for example. There's a trend in Port Alberni towards smaller households. So the number of households in Port Alberni is growing, but a lot of that growth is due to people forming smaller households when they do form them. So the rate of household growth in Port Alberni, the number of households is going up, but it's double the rate of the population growth. So people are forming one- and two-family households where previously they may have formed three or four or more family households. Most households only need one or two bedrooms to meet their needs, although they may prefer more. Port Alberni has a really high share of one-to-two-person households. It's up at 74% of all households have one or two people. So while we may idealize having three- or four-bedroom home, really, if we were just talking about strict need to live and have shelter, many of us could get by with a one- or two-person home. Shrinking household sizes may require a shift towards more multi-unit housing with one or two bedrooms. And the smaller dwellings are also more affordable on the market than larger dwellings. A broader range of smaller housing forms may be required to meet Port Alberni's housing needs because core housing need is concentrated in the low-income and one- and two-person households. So this could be a variety of different housing formats and typologies, possibly laneway homes, carriage homes, secondary suites, tiny homes could be part of the solution to get more of those units on the market, but also just small townhouses, different sizes of apartments, et cetera, and even small, single-detached homes and duplexes. Going forward, what does this mean for the city of Port Alberni? And this is where we can have more of a discussion now and in the coming months. But we will be considering the interim housing needs report when developing our policy for the 2042 OCP. Some of these solutions can be land regulations that create opportunities for housing, pre-planning for housing in the city. This is also required for the province deciding where does the housing go, how many need to be built, how many can be built in the locations we specify, and then what investments in infrastructure are required to ensure that it gets built or that it can be built. We have prioritizing housing applications. So when the city receives a development application, this one option for the city is to accelerate that and prioritize it. And that's something that we can set up. Having an accessible development approvals process, so somebody who is just an owner, not a developer, but they have land and they want to build it, is making that process as accessible to the public as possible, transparent and easy to follow, and being adequately resourced to help guide people through that process as well. There's, the city can partner with nonprofit housing providers to provide affordable housing and get creative with solutions. City can sell land for targeted housing need, for example, the affordable non-market housing. The city can establish, or the city should establish, development cost charges that are balanced. And what I mean by that is balancing the need to fund infrastructure through development, but doing so in a way that recognizes that development cost charges are passed on to the consumer in the form of higher unit costs, which can be a challenge to figure out with the local market. And the city can also go about securing amenities, and by that I mean securing affordable housing, through density bonusing. So having a very deliberate, clear, and transparent structure and bylaw where if a developer wants to build increased density on a property, they have the option of doing so by providing affordable housing integrated with their development. The city can also protect existing rental housing. The housing stock in Port Alberni is very old. A lot of the housing was built pre-1960 and pre-1980. If any multifamily buildings are up for redevelopment, the city can do things to protect and maintain that rental housing through zoning. And the city can make investments in infrastructure, as I mentioned, in areas where affordable housing can be developed. And that's all that I have for my presentation, but I'm happy to participate in any discussion that follows. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Are there questions from council? Counselor Solda and then Counselor Petola.
It's not really questions, Madam Mayor. Looking at the report, thank you for the report. And I just know, like, rent is a lot higher than what we're presented now. And you see it online all the time, people looking for something to live in. And there's a long list, and landlords do have a choice there. The, and like, all the stats have changed since this report has been done, like, all stats when they come in. I find that I would like to see more affordable development in increased density. And we do have that in the Argyle Street. We have 10 units, I believe. So I would like to see that happen. And I think that's really important that we do. But again, I remember being told, what is affordable? You know, what do we, how do we look at that? And, you know, affordable in Vancouver would be a lot more than it is in our community. So do you have an answer to that? Maybe that is the question.
Yeah, I would think that it would be on council, and staff would bring a proposal to council. We would need a bylaw. We need to write out all the rules over what affordable housing means to Port Alberni in a bylaw. Council can review and consider that for approval, and then it's clear for everyone who comes to the city. So if you want density bonusing and you want this much, you want to build a higher building, more units in it, cover more of the land, you need this percent of units to be affordable, and it's going to be at this rate, and this is the formula, and it's just no questions about it.
Counselor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Chair, or Madam Mayor. Continuing in that train of thought, there were motions or policies passed previously by this council with regards to density bonusing and DCCs, particularly referencing the sections of the Act that allow for that and asking the planning department to turn their mind to including those in any new developments. Has the planning department, apart from mentioning it here, had any success in moving forward? And if not, why? And whatever the why is, how can council assist?
Through the chair to Counselor Petola. Currently, staff have not drafted a bylaw edits, or bylaw amendments that would put the density bonusing into effect. The starting point is with the OCP and enabling that policy through the upcoming draft. The new provincial legislation that came into effect in December of 2023 was really specific in how cities have to do density bonusing. So the city's current density bonusing in the bylaw, which you do mention, was not rigorously tested in a way that made it viable for developers to take advantage of. So under the new provincial legislation, the city actually has to conduct a financial analysis on development and develop its density bonusing so that development is still viable for the amount of density being offered by the city in exchange for something like affordable housing. And then the city has to report on that to the province every year. So it'd be much more rigorous than previous attempts at density bonusing. At this time, we are drafting OCP policy to support doing this, and we'll bring that draft to council. But in the interim, we have not started at this time.
Thank you. I have other questions. So the, this study focuses just within city limits. Would I be correct? And is there any comments, notation, otherwise, with regards to the effect of housing and income levels in regions directly neighboring the city?
Through the chair to Counselor Petola. As you mentioned, you're correct. This report is only the Port Alberni census area. What the city can do and should do is working with the regional district because housing is a region-wide issue. And in the next five years, the city needs to adopt, sorry, the city needs to complete and council needs to adopt a full housing needs report. So you mentioned this one is the interim housing needs report. It's basically a lightning-fast report that the province required the city to do in a one-year time period. But by 2028, the city needs to do a full housing needs report. We will likely do that with the regional district. It's going to involve community engagement with nonprofit housing providers and a whole range of community members.
Thank you. I noted on slides nine, 10, 12, and 13, those are all the graphs, that, those are just the graphs, that show rent increases, housing sales prices, et cetera, over time. And I note that, of course, it's nonlinear. There are bumps and valleys. And I'm wondering, with regards to the valleys, if you have any information on what those dips correspond to in the greater world economically, politically, whatnot?
Through the chair to Counselor Petola. Just to clarify quickly about your question, are we just talking about the different charts and the dips in the charts? Okay. No, I'm not certain. Actually, in some of the sections of the report, they do go into some speculation on what some of the dips might be, I believe. I don't know what those dips represent in terms of the history of Port Alberni over the last 20 years. But when we're talking about purchase and rent prices, I think one thing that the consultants noted, and which is a general trend when it comes to housing, is that house prices are sticky. So they tend to go up quick and they come down slow. And it takes a prolonged period of vacancy on the market for those prices to start to dip. And sometimes where we do see dips, it's only because maybe a lot of housing came onto the market, and eventually over time, those prices dipped. And that's my speculation.
Fair enough. I mean, unless somebody's actually done the correlative study, then how could anybody know what it correlates to? And we only get subjective insights, such as when my house in Port Alberni went from a pittance of a price of 80,000 that I bought it at, down to a worse pittance of a price of 40,000 before it came back up to 120 and then dropped again to 80. So over time, I think we can all note through our own experience that housing prices, rents, and demands for various types of housing have gone up and down in Port Alberni. And again, subjectively speaking, it seems like that is often related to the local economy and the success of resource industries in our local economy. So what I'm wondering is, as we look forward in five or 10 years, does this report have any notations or adjustments or? any notations or adjustments or percentage chance of outcomes to relate to possible economic changes that aren't all that hard to guess what they will be? For example, Trump, regional competition from Alberta, forest industry downturns, things like that. I mean, I remember, I want to go on and on with my question, but I recall a number of years ago when Gold River Housing was worth about $10,000 a house. And now it's come back, of course, but how might that affect these reports and have those issues been included in the projections of these reports?
Through the chair to Counselor Petola, a very important question, which I'm glad you brought up, and I think while I might not be able to answer it directly, I can shed some light on a bit of how this report came to be. One thing I'll just mention first off is that the figures in the charts, the housing prices, et cetera, are adjusted for inflation as well. So the previous numbers are adjusted for today's dollars. And one thing that happened with the production of this report, you know, we started, the provincial legislation came down in February, and they're saying, you need a housing needs report by the end of 2024. And we immediately started working on it. We had the first part of the report, the data and a lot of the data analysis done by February, and we were gearing up to have the actual housing needs numbers done by March, and the province actually took quite a long time to release their methodology until the summer. That was one component, but also a lot of the data comes from BC Stats, and their population projections kept changing for our community with the federal immigration targets as they changed across the spring and summer. So changes at the federal government level change our anticipated in and out migration numbers in a big way, not for all of BC and even for Port Alberni. And that really changed the data as this report went along. As September came closer and BC Stats was still adjusting their numbers as federal targets kept changing, we basically just called it and said, these are the numbers we're going with.
And I'm down to my final question, which is, I noticed on slide 16, the H&R method type and tenure allocation, the breakdown is to market rentals, non-market rentals, deep subsidy and supportive rentals, and ownership, which, when I read that, seems like there are a lot of other types of housing other than simple market housing, which clearly is good to know so that we as council and we as the city can facilitate those other types of housing options. But we can do little more than facilitate it, and I'm, so it seems to me that the responsibility to actually be the financial driver behind this would be programs from senior government. And I'm wondering if you have any suggestions on how we're going to reach, and I take it, I understand all your comments about how quickly you've been able to come up with this report, but do you have any comments or insights on to how we will achieve this, what the amount of senior government involvement would be, and if at all, there was consideration for utilizing a municipal housing corporation at the city level, or if that would have any effect at all? Just thinking, is that an option at all? Thank you.
Through the chair to Counselor Petola. Yeah, that is, I was just flipping through the papers here to find some of the portions of the report that speaks to this in a bit of a tangential way. But essentially, the way the city can have an influence on reaching this numbers, obviously enabling as much market supply as possible has a broad and general impact on housing supply. But the private market is, does a really poor job at providing for people who don't have money to purchase. So what the city has to do is incentivize, encourage, and use its influence for the production of non-market housing. The city is a landowner. The city has land. It has influence over what happens to that land. And you did mention a municipal housing corporation of sorts, but that is one solution, is to establish an arms-length development corporation. It could have a very mild mandate to build housing, doesn't have to be complicated or big apartment buildings, but doing, having the city do what it can to get that deep subsidy housing where it matters most and is the most difficult to build, I think is absolutely an option. One advantage the city has in building that form of housing is it's not paying the land cost, which is a massive part of a development pro forma.
Thank you for your insightful answers. Very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Hagard.
Thank you so much. First of all, Brian, I know how incredibly busy you are, and I really appreciate you coming out tonight and going through this report in more detail with us. I really appreciate it. It gave me a much better understanding this time than last time. I felt like we were kind of rushed when you went through it the last time because you were at the end of a long meeting, so thank you so much. Not so many questions, but I do have a few comments. I do understand the great need in our community for affordable housing units and the smaller one-bedroom units, as you said, but we have to be very careful that we just don't focus on building this particular kind of unit. In order for our community to grow, we have to attract families. So for an example, my son lives in a three-bedroom townhouse in a eight-unit complex. He's the only one for Port Alberni. Everybody else came from the interior, lower mainland or Comox Valley. So I feel if you build it, they will come. And also, I want to share that a professional couple wanted to relocate to Port Alberni, and they could not find a suitable long-term home to purchase, so they ended up going to Sunshine Coast. And those are the kind of people that you want to attract to ensure that they stay here, they live here, they contribute to the economy, and we really need professionals in our community, and they wanted to have a family here too. So it's very disappointing that they couldn't find anything. Also, we talked about seniors being in the core housing need. In the last housing assessment report, I remember the person who gave me the report saying a lot of one or two seniors live in three and four-bedroom homes, and they're older homes, obviously. But as you said, they either can't afford to do the maintenance, or they're physically not able to do the maintenance to keep the upkeep on the homes. So that kind of tells me that we have to focus on building accommodations for seniors so that they can transition into maybe smaller units, and somebody can buy probably a beautiful character home and fix it up, and a family can live in it. And I think that would be great for our community as well. And I think we have to change the perception that many, many countries throughout the world, you don't buy a home. That is just not in the reality. People live in rentals for their whole lives and probably the same unit their whole entire lives. So we have to learn to make rental units into long-term homes. And I feel that right now, that's not happening. They're more like transitions. There is some new ones on the market that are for long terms, but I just feel that they're kind of missing the mark a little bit, developers. And also, you talked about the percentages of how much our cost of homes have increased to purchase, but we have to remember our homes, as Counselor Petola alluded to, they were artificially low. So for example, my son's first house that he bought was for $60,000, corner locked, two-bedroom with a garage. I mean, that's insane, even for 10 years ago. So we have to remember they're artificially low, and they're still lower compared to most communities. And you talked about how people have to change for mortgage lenders, we have to advocate. So that made me think that if somebody can pay rent of $2,400 a month, they should tell the banks that if they can pay rent, then they can make a mortgage payment at that amount. So maybe we have to look at re-looking at what those laws are. I'm not saying that's us or you or anybody, but maybe that's something that we can advocate for a little bit. So I don't know if you have any responses? Oh, I was just going to share with everyone, the next point in time homeless count is going to be held on April the 30th, so that will give us another indication of where our community is right now. So thank you again so much. I don't know if you have any responses, but those are just my thoughts going through this. Thank you.
To the chair to Counselor Hagard. Yeah, thank you. And I think I'll just mention that the housing needs report contains so many tables and charts that I couldn't even get into tonight, but they did, the author did go into incredible detail in breaking down housing need according to the number of bedrooms and the income of the household. And we found that the need, there is a correlation between the need for more bedrooms and the higher income of the household. So the households that need the most bedrooms, three and four are concentrated in the above-average income levels, and the lower-income households need the one and two bedrooms. So you're right, there is a correlation. And when the city puts together a strategy for tackling all this housing need, we need, we can't forget that we do need to allow for enough housing to be constructed at a higher price point for the people who can afford to purchase at that price point, because if we don't allow those houses to go on the market, what they end up doing is competing with lower-income households that just outcompete everyone for rent and homes to buy, and then that just drives up the cost further. So we can't forget that we are building a spectrum of housing from one end to the other.
Thank you for making that point, Brian.
Thank you. In my professional life, I work in the mortgage industry, obviously, and there's a write-up that goes around that people share pretty consistently that says, like, from a client's perspective, the bank says, I can't afford $2,000 a month for a mortgage, so I pay $3,000 in rent instead. It is a ridiculous mismatch that paying your rent counts for nothing in a lender's eyes. It doesn't build your credit, it doesn't do anything. And it is actually something that the mortgage industry has been advocating for federally, for there to be recognition given for people who can verify rent paid for certain amounts of time, to use that in place of credit or in other, there's a few specific ways that the industry has been advocating for because it makes no sense whatsoever, and we see that a lot. I mean, obviously, people can't pay their, can't save for a down payment because rent is in a lot of cases higher than mortgage payments. So there's a lot of imbalances there that are very frustrating. I want to speak a little bit to, I mean, I think that when we see housing needs reports, our mind always goes to how much can we develop? And I think that's an important piece of it. The city obviously has a role in encouraging the right types of developments in the right places and as well certainly in utilizing our land where we can, as we have, to support, to support that, you know, lower and deeper affordability developments for people in need in our community, and that's something I think we've made a lot of progress on in the last few years and more work to be done. However, I think that in Port Alberni specifically, and you touched on this a bit, we have a mismatch in a lot of cases of often seniors, but sometimes one or two-person families living in large homes, because for a long time in Port Alberni, all we had was large homes. There was no apartments, no condos, no townhomes. I mean, the reason that you see those, that condo kind of and apartment number having gone up so significantly in prices because that category of housing literally did not exist in our community for a long time. So as that housing, kind of spectrum of the type of housing that we have starts to level out and even out as it should have been for a long time, that problem starts to address itself, but we have, I've always thought, an opportunity in the very large homes that we do have, that a lot of people, I mean, when I moved back to Port Alberni and purchased my first home, I bought a four-bedroom, two-bathroom house, not because that's what I wanted, but because that was the only type of house that was basically available to purchase in Port Alberni. I would have bought a condo if there was a condo. So we have a lot of people who are in these homes, not because they need them, but because that's what was available, and that's becoming obviously less common as real estate has gotten so unaffordable so quickly. But I do think that there's an opportunity in that and that the municipality does have a role in making it easy and making it accessible for people to create secondary suites in their homes. And I think there's a trend in this, obviously, as well, because the federal government has just changed the mortgage regulations to enable people to draw equity specifically for the purpose of putting a secondary suite into their home to a level that they were never able to draw equity before, and to a level that they're still not able to draw equity for unless they're putting a suite in their home. So there's some very intentional programs coming from the federal government. But my question is, where are we with our secondary suite regulations? Because I know for a long time, they were incredibly restrictive. Basically, the only way you could put a secondary suite in your home was if it was going to be, meet the standard of being a legal suite, which we all know is largely impossible in an older home to get to that standard. I know that we did update some of the regulations a few years ago, and I would just note that they don't appear to be updated on the city's website. It does still say that a secondary suite is only permitted in an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, and I know that we updated that to be in a dwelling where there was a long-term resident and not necessarily an owner occupying that. So I think there's an update needed on our site. As well, it says detached, or it says you're permitted one secondary suite in a residential detached dwelling, subject to specific conditions with a link to a document, but you can't open that document. So I'm wondering if this is something that we're getting more applications for? Do we have a reasonable, reasonably simple program currently for secondary suites? Is it on pace with what other communities offer? Because I know when we reviewed this quite a few years ago, most communities had sort of more of an authorized suite approach where they were basically inspecting for life safety to ensure that, you know, windows had egress, to ensure that there was proper fire separation, and that the suites had, you know, full-height ceilings and things like that. Whereas in Port Alberni, you really could not build a secondary suite at that point in time and get it authorized in any way. It was just too onerous. So as we have this mismatch of housing, I think that there's a real opportunity for people to be creating suites within their homes, also bringing in income, which we've talked about earlier tonight, is a need for people in our community with cost of housing and then a mechanism for financing it with the federal government that didn't exist before. So if you could give us an update on our secondary suite regulations?
Madam Chair, in 2020, 2024, whenever we did the last zoning bylaw update, in accordance with provincial, it was spring or fall of 2023? Yeah, anyhow, sorry, the years are blending together, and the different provincial legislation that's been coming our way is blending together as well. But we put forward an amended zoning bylaw recently, in the last round, which council supported, a very progressive approach to allowing up to four units on almost every previously single-family property in the city. So that includes any combination of secondary suites, carriage houses, laneway homes, or even row house arrangements, up to four units on almost every property, as long as they had sewer or water, or they met a minimum lot size, which is very small, it was 280 meters squared. So we have regulations that I would say are more progressive than many other communities in BC, because we are trying to essentially, and we took the provincial legislation and then we tried not to get in the way of enabling people to put in things like suites. Now, people that do build a suite, we are seeing more interest. It is slow, but it is steady. What we're seeing right now is people preparing for building season and trying to ask us questions and get permission for building things on their property. But with all the legislation that's come in and the changes to the zoning bylaw we've made, we expect all the infill development of suites and carriage homes in different styles of up to four units on properties to be a very slow and steady type thing. It's not going to be a rush. When somebody comes to us and wants to build one, they need to meet building code when they renovate their house and get a building inspection for that. What we have in Port Alberni is, I would estimate hundreds and hundreds of suites that were not built up to code over several decades. And when people come to us, maybe somebody buys a house and it has a suite in it already, what we do encourage them to do is to have a building inspector inspect it for life safety, so access and egress, as well as the fire separations and whatnot, and get that up to code where we can. But at least under the zoning bylaw, people are able to build suites on almost every property in town and get a building permit for it.
That is excellent. And I guess, just again, from sort of the practicality perspective, is it reasonable? I mean, I would imagine a lot of our housing stock, because it is older housing stock, and this is the issue that we were running into before years ago when people were trying to put secondary suites in, it is not practical to bring that area up to code. So do we, we still have, I guess, you know, we can inspect for life safety when someone is not putting in a new suite. Is there a happy medium still where we are ensuring that if somebody cannot, for whatever reason, bring a new suite up to code? Because we know that there are some significant challenges with that. I mean, I think code is like two-by-six walls that just don't exist in old houses, for instance, some things that just would not be changed. Are they still able to put suites in? And this is And this is sort of an old issue of mine that I know a lot of people used to come to the council, to council on, and it sounds like we've made some great changes. But I guess I'm just wanting to make sure that we are still enabling where we can if it is not possible to bring things up to code.
Madam Chair, I think if I understand correctly, the issue is that we have such old building stock in Port Alberni. And if somebody comes and wants to put a suite into a 1920s house, is that legal and do they stand a chance of getting it up to code? And I think the biggest question mark when it comes to putting in suites into older homes is the ceiling height in the basement. I mean, in some cases, they're less than six feet, and is that legal? And for that, I actually don't have an answer. I'd have to ask Scott Smith, the Director of Development Services. He has much more experience in the older versions of building code and if they apply and if somebody can get occupancy with the current code being in place. If you wish, I can ask Mr. Smith to just address this question.
No, I think that's fine. Not intending to get, you know, full details on it tonight, really was just wanting to know if we had made changes from some of the difficulties that used to exist. And it sounds like we have, so that's great. I think that there are some suites in our community that frankly should be shut down, which is a challenging thing to do in a housing shortage. But the fact that we had really restrictive and prohibited guidelines for a long time led to people not coming forward to the city when they were building suites because they just assumed that they would be shut down if they sort of made their suites known. So my view has always been that we should enable people as much as possible to put suites in, but for us to have a mechanism to ensure that those suites are safe. And when we, at the time when we had very restrictive policy, I think it led to unfortunately us having more dangerous suites in our community than safe. Mike?
Through the chair, I know that across the country, they've been dealing with illegal suites. There's been recent case law that has put a city at risk if they allow a legal suite, if they know that it's present but does not meet the fire code or egress or entrance. So windows do have to be a certain size, which can be an issue in some of the smaller buildings. And also, it has to have two entrances in and out of the building, which can cause an issue. I know that there are some units that would have a locked door, and they count that as an egress. With the fire department, they can't actually allow it, doesn't mean that that is an egress. So there is recent case law that holds municipalities to a higher-level standard through the Fire Act.
Thank you. And I think that's important, but not really so relevant to this conversation as these are suites that would, that our intent and what other communities were doing was inspecting for those minimum life safety codes and fire code, et cetera. But good information. Other comments from council? Councilor Hagerd?
When you were talking about renters, you know, I pay $3,000 a month, but I'm not eligible for a mortgage for $2,000. Is there, we talked about, because there's just some way you could have this conversation with our Member of Parliament the next time you meet with them and see what the federal government is doing? Because I feel like they just keep making it harder and harder and making it out of reach when this time we should be making easier for people.
We can definitely bring this up. I think we're working on scheduling a joint meeting with our Member of Parliament and our MLA for the early new year at their request. I'm not sure if staff has heard that yet, but I know they are intending to reach out. So this is definitely something that we can chat with them about. And I would just say that for the first time in over 10 years, the federal government has just made a series of changes to qualifying rules that actually made it easier for people to qualify for mortgages. So that is following a long trend of changes in the other direction, which caused a lot of difficulty for people. They're minor, it's just a one small step in the right direction, but a series of changes, yeah. Other comments? Councilor Dame, any comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm just wondering, knowing that the city received a grant through the, I'm blanking on what it was called, this past summer, in order to streamline the development application process, I think it was $150,000. I'm wondering if there's any information specifically on what we could or are planning to do with that money in order to make that process a little bit easier?
Through the chair to Councilor Dame, you're correct. We received $150,000 in grant money through the local government development approvals program through UBCM. And the intent of the grant funding is to improve our development approvals processes with the intent of getting more housing approved faster is the ultimate goal from the province. Due to, we've had some staff shortages, so we haven't made it to the point where we can issue a request for proposals to get a project like that completed. But it is one of our goals for this winter with a projected completion of spring 2025. So probably about a six-month project through the winter to spring and summer. So it is on the books, we haven't gotten around to it yet. We are just wrapping up another grant-funded project where we had $150,000 for a complete community's assessment. And we are just wrapping up that report, and then we're going to roll all of that data into the official community plan draft that we're doing right now. So lots on the goal, and the next project is the one you're referring to.
Thank you. Councilor Petola?
I'm hoping that this is the end of the discussion because I kind of wanted to close with this quote from a Christmas movie that is very popular, called A Wonderful Life. And I've always felt that although that movie is, you know, seasonal, it has a lot of insights and lessons for those in the housing industry. And in 1946, George Bailey said to the greedy Mr. Potter, "You know how long it takes a working man to save $5,000? That's the amount for a deposit on his house." And it was hard then, and it's still hard now.
Absolutely, and thank you for that. I am going to make one more comment to ruin your excellent close to this meeting or to this subject. I just wanted to say that while I think that we have made excellent progress with partnerships with nonprofits in the community and subsequently with B.C. Housing to bring several projects into our community, low-barrier housing, affordable housing, and different types of supportive housing, we know we have a long way to go still. Where we have not made progress is a large federal grants, and the federal government does have the Housing Accelerator Program that they have expanded this year, and the city has not made any formal applications for that, either ourselves or through partnerships. I think that that's another thing that we should talk to our Member of Parliament about to potentially get some more guidance on what types of applications may be a fit and how the city could potentially partner with, you know, an application where it does make sense with a nonprofit or potentially form a housing corporation and lead an application ourselves, whichever, you know, might have the best fit. So I think let's not let the Housing Accelerator Fund slip our minds. And interesting, I guess, all municipalities in the province will have to have a housing needs assessment probably done reasonably soon. I'm going to be really curious to see if we are able to, once everyone sort of has theirs out, to almost see if there's like, is the province going to tell us what the average numbers are? Once everyone's assessments are in? Because, I mean, I think that whether or not we continue to get funds from provincial and federal government will really fall on how our numbers compare to others and how great our need is compared to other municipalities. So if the province does not put out sort of a summary of these reports, I think it would be worth us doing our own research, even just to compare some like communities reviewing their numbers to ours and, again, help make our case for bringing more housing into the community. And with that, we don't need to receive this. It's going to, I assume, come to a regular council meeting for adoption. So we will, there's no staff reports, no correspondence, no business. We'll move on to question period. This is an opportunity for, and sorry, thank you very much, Brian, for the report, for all your work on it, for taking the time to go over it with us again. We will move on to question period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of the committee. And for anyone participating electronically, please use the raise your hand feature, and we will call on you in the order in which you appear. Would any members of the public like to ask questions today? Chris?
It wasn't my intention to monopolize this microphone today. Thought there would be a few more people, but, sorry. Three things, just general questions, I guess, but I wanted to start with a story first. I've been sitting there trying to figure out how I would relate this. But those of you with a longer memory on council might remember a few years back on Third Avenue when we had people living in closets in a particular dwelling area. I wouldn't say it was any kind of apartment or anything like that, but that might ring a few bells. I'm a delivery driver at some points during the week. I delivered to someone in a closet yesterday. Literally a closet. So there's a huge, huge need for affordable housing. And you guys have done, I think, really amazing work addressing a lot of that, but the need is gigantic. On a question sort of related to that, the housing report deals with supply, supply and demand. And there's, I think there's a portion, there's two significant factors that I think this isn't addressing, and it's a provincial issue, it's a federal issue, it's almost a societal issue how we're perceiving this problem. But yes, you know, we need to build more housing and we can affect the price that way. But the wage gap between what people are making and how that wage is rising compared to how fast prices have risen, regardless of supply, even if supply had kept up, I don't think that prices would have, you know, slowed down necessarily. There's lots of other factors that have gone into why those prices have risen. So I guess my question to council is, what can you bring to bear using your influence or other ways to try to address and advocate to shrink that gap? We need to increase the median wages of people in this city and across the province. I bought a house in 2005 when I moved back. My wage has not increased a whole lot since then. I would not be able to purchase a house in Port Alberni today. I just couldn't. So I think that's a question that, you know, people get really focused, and especially governments, they're like, yeah, 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 we're going to build lots of housing and it's going to fix everything. It's not. It's not if people can't earn enough to actually pay for it. So that's my question around influence, I guess, trying to address that and maybe, you know, getting that to our MP and our MLA. The second question is around amenities. And I've corresponded to the city previously about a development on Redford, but just generally, this notion of private developers having responsibility to provide amenities that the entire community can take advantage of. And I think it comes down to, you know, what kind of ratio in our official community plan or those kinds of planning documents, things that we're putting together, what kind of ratio of population to recreation spaces are we looking for as a city? And what responsibility does the city have to make sure that those spaces are created and maintained? Because I think if you look throughout the past, you know, 20, 30 years, we keep losing these kinds of green spaces, recreational spaces, as we fill in development because we relied on other service providers to create those spaces. It's all on the city now. You guys have to create those public spaces for people to be able to enjoy their neighborhoods or whatever is created. So I hope that, you know, there are mechanisms put in place to be able to create that kind of ratio. And, you know, it can be a ratio, it can be something that's very tangible so that the city can shoot for a goal and say, yes, you know, we did that. So those are my questions.
Thank you very much, Chris. I think that our OCP, the first draft, and then further community input from there will start to put some more intentionality to some of those things. I will say that it's not, you know, an official ratio or number or specific, you know, target, I think, as you're asking for. But very early on, from the start of looking at the SOMAS development specifically, council kind of tentatively set, you know, numbers on what percentage we wanted to be park-and-open space of that new development. So that's a larger development that is easier when you're starting from scratch. But I will just say that it's on council's mind to recognize the needs and more formalize the needs of ensuring that not only are the spaces that we have protected, but that new spaces are added, which is obviously a more challenging thing. So I appreciate those comments. And I think that we will see more kind of policy coming as a result of the OCP when we get to that stage in the plan. Thank you. Councilor Sodha?
I have no comment to say on what you were, because the mayor has said it all, but I do, I'm a little upset about the closet person. And have you reported that? Because that's such a, yeah, you know where I'm thinking here. So if, I don't know where you could report that, if that's bylaw, maybe through you, Madam Mayor, to the CAO, maybe he has an idea, bylaw or something?
I think it's probably a residential tenancy issue, unfortunately.
Pass it on.
Yeah, and I would imagine it's in a building that we are aware of concerns with.
I wouldn't want to say anymore because I wouldn't want that person to be homeless.
Yep, absolutely. Councilor Dame?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to comment on one question. And I mean, the question of how we influence the median income in Port Alberni, that's a huge, challenging question, and I don't have a good answer. But I do know that one thing that I see happening, and I think that we could influence and have, you know, be supportive of as much as we can, is this new trend of remote workers moving to Port Alberni. And it comes up in my day-to-day life constantly, that there are people moving to this community because they could live anywhere and do their work from home, from their computer, and they're choosing Port Alberni. And so identifying the reasons why and continuing to lean into those factors and continuing to build a community that is livable and, you know, just continues to invest in the lifestyle that people are looking for, that they're bringing their incomes here, they're bringing money from outside the community into the community, and they're spending that money hopefully in the community. In this age of, you know, Amazon and all these things that are constantly siphoning money out of the community, this is one of the only things that I think I've really seen as a tangible, it's happening almost organically right now, which is really exciting, but I think we could be even more deliberate about it. And we are deliberate about building a livable community, but we could certainly continue to just be aware and focused on that specific thing. So just one thought.
As a remote worker, I could not agree more. And the company that I work for has over 1,000 employees across the country who all work remote. And so like, that is a growing trend and I think a huge opportunity. I just had a discussion with our economic development manager a few days ago, who told me, like, just off the top of his mind, he named about 15 people who are remote employees new to the community and chose Port Alberni, you know, for a variety of reasons, but largely balancing lifestyle and affordability. I have long said that we need to stop kind of selling affordability because we will no longer be affordable. And then what do we have if we haven't built a community based on lifestyle? But we are still, you know, somewhat affordable. I don't think we are affordable at all anymore, but somewhat affordable compared to other places. And so we do still have certainly some segments of workers choosing the community for that reason. And one thing that the economic development manager and I actually talked about was putting together a bit of a brain trust to start to understand what remote workers who are choosing the community, like, get more details on why and more detail choosing the community, like, get more details on why and more details on needs and things like that. So I think that there's definitely a lot more of a plan that could be put into that rather than just the organicness that is happening right now.
Okay. Any other members of the public who'd like to speak today? Come on forward, Joseph.
Thank you. My name's Joseph. I live here in Port Alberni. Just a couple of quick things related to tonight's, a couple of questions. Housing Needs Report, is this something that's a normal part of an OCP? Or is this strictly because of the new legislation that was introduced in the fall of 2002-23?
Mike.
Yeah, thank you for the questions. Through the chair, it's more formalized now with the new legislation. However, municipalities have historically done needs assessments.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. And it says also in tonight's agenda on here that the report is supposed to be ready or presented, completed by local government by January 1st of 2025. Kind of short, condensed to come up with a report of this length and kind of a, you know, when that was introduced, and the government of B.C. said, "We're going to do this," it was kind of thrown out. Municipalities have to jump on board and do something. A lot of time pressure on there to come up with something as big as this. And I'm just wondering, did they contribute, there's obviously a cost involved in doing a report like this, to the B.C. government said, "Well, we'll fund that report for you, so we don't want to put that extra burden on you. We would like you to do something." So is there, I don't know what the costs are, I won't ask what the costs were to do a report like this, but did they step up and say, "We'll help you do that report"?
Mike.
Pay for it.
Yeah, through the chair, the B.C. government did provide funding to municipalities to do the needs assessment, and the requirement now is to updates pretty much with the OCP every five years. But some communities, if they're growing faster, may have to do more housing needs assessments as we move forward, and that will open up other opportunities for grant initiatives. And I think you'll see the federal government and the provincial government linking that together. And also, further to that, you're going to also see, to Counselor Dane's and the mayor's comments, economic development is going to become an important factor on the types of housing that we're going to need and then also affect our bylaws. So, yeah, that all affects the rapidness and when you're going to need it as the community develops.
Thank you. Great, thank you. And so, as always, the next question I have in that, also in the agenda in the report tonight, there's a mention of things that we might have to do, things we've already done. And one of them is a comment or a question on one of the things that's already been looked at and has already been, I think, implemented. I'm not sure what page it's on, but it says, "Council adopted and updated zoning bylaw in 2024 to allow up to four units of small-scale multi-unit housing on lots previously zoned for single-detached housing. The bylaw simplified zoning by reducing the number of residential zones from six to two regulations." We're also updating support infill housing, including reduced setbacks and that sort of things. So going from a single family to now four units, that's one of the solutions that we've already implemented is hopefully addressing some of this. And my question probably relates to Counselor Hager's mention of a family that wanted to move here and couldn't find anything. I'm just wondering what this is going to do to, I don't think we've got a lot of pressure right now because we're a smaller community. Place is larger than this. It has really made a big difference on affordability of buying a single-family house, almost impossible, because now you can buy that house, tear it down, build four units. That's put it way out of the range of most people because of that possibility. I don't think we've got that kind of pressure here. But with this sort of an introduction, not only are you putting the cost, now you could say, "Future development, we're going to zone it differently. We're going to have smaller, we can put more on it." Existing where somebody wants to come in and buy a single-family house, if they can, if they can afford it, which is expensive already, they've got a family, they're moving here, they do want a lot, they want a house, maybe they've got, you know, two or three kids, four. I've got a nephew with five young families, so there's some big families out there. But what is that going to do if you're going to say all lots now can apply this zoning to? What's it going to do to that? It's going to escalate the cost of that one time. I know some houses right now that do have potential of putting a small something, that house is now definitely much more costly because of that. Secondly, if we had that sort of pressure where now that's happening, not only are you putting the cost up for somebody who wants to come in and buy, the example of Counselor Hager's, where they're now on the Sunshine Coast, they couldn't find something. Not only is that happening, because now you're putting that pressure on that, because it can now make the land more valuable, now you're having to demolish, and now you've got a lot of stuff to deal with on the other end. So if you're tearing down, for example, I live in a house built in 1976. I'm not sure what the bylaws were at that time. I'm on a very small lot, comparison to a lot of lots. 1966, I have checked into it and found out some history of where I live. In 1966, there was a house permit taken out to build a brand-new house on that lot that I'm currently on. In 1976, there was a request put in for demolition of that house, 10 years old, was demolished, and three houses were put on that lot. So there goes a 10-year-old house demolished and into the landfill. So you're creating, there's a lot to look at when you're looking at these things. It's not simple, that's for sure. So my question is, is there a question? How do you think that's helping? Yes, it might be infill, but how's that helping with those? Should it apply to maybe newer developments where you can do that? Or does it just a broad thing, we say, "Anywhere in Port Alberni, we're now going to push the price up or the cost up," because you can now develop it into, tear the house down, build four units on there?
Thank you for somewhat of a question. I do think it's speculation to say what will happen to values as a result of this. However, it is important to consider speculation in making these decisions and all potentials. You know, we will monitor. Now, the changes came from the province, and Port Alberni implemented our, you know, version of them, so there's only so much change that we can make. But I think those are important comments to think about and trends to monitor, and we'll see what happens, and, sorry, see what happens, and always adapt from there within the ability that we have as we start to see results. But I have not seen that yet, but what I have seen is significant increase in value of any home with a suite. And that's something that wasn't talked about specifically in this report today, but I think stands out to me that it used to be, there used to be a lot of opportunities for people to purchase a home with a mortgage helper, make it more affordable, and now those homes have gone up to such a significant value as a result of that suite that it is no longer a mortgage helper, really. So I think there's a lot of trends happening in real estate, often affected by the things that we do, and so, you know, hearing potentials is important and helpful as we consider all of our options for the future. Thanks, Joseph. I will go to Lisa, who has raised her hand online. Lisa, whenever you're ready, if you want to just unmute yourself. I think Lisa is gone.
Oh, she is.
Lisa, if you are ready, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, now I got it. That was a bit of a trial.
That's great. We can hear you now. Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. My question is to follow up with Joseph. When you say there's like a four unit that can be made from, like, someone's house, what is that due to the taxes of that place, and what does it do to the taxes around the neighborhood?
Thank you, Lisa. So taxation is based on B.C. assessed value, and B.C. assessment is independent of the city, so we do not have any input or able to, or ability to influence what will or will not happen. And I don't think that we have the firsthand knowledge of B.C. assessment's assessment process to be able to really confidently say what that would do to the assessed value.
Well, I'm just wondering, like, you say that you're part of the mortgage thing, so does that typically not go up from what you've ever noticed or seen?
That's totally outside of my realm, unfortunately. Yeah, it would be a B.C. assessment question just because there hasn't been the ability to put four units into a home previously, so we don't have a basis to look to, to understand how B.C. assessment would shift their valuation. We do have, B.C. assessment does have pretty good information on their website, and they do have good contact information there, and it's probably a question that could be submitted to them by email, and they might be able to provide more information.
Well, as a city, would you not want to know that, though, for your people living here, how that is going to affect other people, though, just wondering?
Thanks, Lisa. I'll pass it over to Mike, our CIO, and Mike, maybe you can just speak to the provincial regulations and how the changes happened.
Yeah, through the chair, I think every part of the province is adapting to the changes currently that were implemented fairly quickly over the past year. B.C. assessment usually assesses the building that is built on the property and compares it to other values. That's historically how it's done. In our meeting with B.C. assessment at UBCM, they didn't indicate any change on how they are treating the assessment of buildings. So when they come into a house, they assess it when it's new, and then they assess any changes on the ongoing basis on the taxation and comparative to the market around it. And I believe that's what you're asking about with a four unit being built on one of the lot. We haven't seen a lot of applications come in to build four units, and I think this is going to be, take some time for B.C. assessment even, to be able to answer this question with the new regulations. As our planning continues as the city, we look at needing a mixed approach across the city, so it's not all fourplexes, seeing it on every site. I don't think that would be what we see. We look for, continue to have some bigger lots with single-family residential for larger families, et cetera. But, you know, the trend in the province is those lots, those single-family lots are going up in price and becoming under demand. But, yeah, so the real easy answer to you is, I think B.C. assessment is even trying to understand the new legislation and how that's going to affect their business. But again, as the mayor said, you could reach out. I am sure we will have another meeting with them as well to try and understand it, and we will feed this information out to the public when it becomes known to us.
Well, thank you, because I would probably think that, like, places like Victoria or Nanaimo have gone through this already, figuring out where it's gone from residential to like a fourplex. And to look into that would probably be the best interest of people that are planning on changing their old houses into something, because that, if I had an old house and I was going to put that in, I would probably, you know, wonder where that would bring my property taxes and all that. So that might be a good thing for people to know so that they can possibly help with the housing crisis. And another question I have is, is there anything, I heard Dustin was saying about remote workers and stuff like that, which sounds fantastic. Is there any plans from the city to bring in any kind of industry, high-paying jobs? Is there any plans on any of that to be able to keep families here?
Yes, we have an economic development function who is constantly working on bringing in a variety of industries to our community, and our economic development manager provides reports to council quarterly. His last one, I believe, was last month, updating on just progress that we're seeing across several different segments of the economy into the community.
So where would I go to look to find out what you guys are doing for that?
If you would like to take a look at our corporate strategic plan, you can read about some of council's initiatives on the economy, specifically some around small business, but all segments of the economy. And if you want to see progress in the community, you can look to that last quarterly report from our economic development manager, which is a part of council agendas.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Are there any other questions from members of the public?
Okay. Oh, Counselor Petola.
Not trying to get the last word, but I just thought it'd be opportune time to send out a public service message with regards to the All Candidates Meeting happening tomorrow night, 6 o'clock at the casino.
Thank you for that, absolutely. Okay, would somebody like to move adjournment? Moved by Counselor Mealy, seconded by Counselor Dame, seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, non-opposed, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for joining.